I ask that you all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kirk Kammer call the roll, please.
Dunn.
Here.
Hill.
Here.
Palmsky.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Toledo.
Here.
Cahill. Absent.
Nudera.
Here.
Park.
Hi, here, yes.
Hanquist.
Here.
Bastido. Absent.
Here.
Oh, whoa, hey, how are you? Sorry. Mulliner.
Here.
Brennan.
Here.
Remus.
Yeah.
Deuter.
Here.
Thirteen present, one absent.
Thirteen present, one absent. We have a quorum. Moving on to item two, public comment. Did anyone sign up for a public comment this evening?
No, Mayor, no one signed up.
All right, and is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a public comment this evening? All right, moving on to the business before the committee. Item three, review of the fiscal year 2023 budget. I think everyone's been here and done this before, so we're going to start tonight with an introduction, and we're going to go through the topics listed on the agenda. We'll try to get the work done that we have on the agenda, and if it runs lengthier than what we have allocated, we will break it off at 10 o'clock. And with that, I will ask city manager to please introduce the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. This evening, we are pleased to submit the fiscal year 2023 budget. The budget is our municipality's operation plan for the year, and for Elmhurst, we do an outlook for two years. The budget is organized in a manner that includes summary information, line item detail of the proposed budget for 2023 by fund, with justification forms that identify budget details for all items that are in excess of 5% and more than $2,500 over the previous year's budget. Also includes individual fund balance schedules, budget, and financial policies and procedures, and finally supplemental information. So the 2023 budget consists of 16 different funds. The city's budget process allocates resources and prioritizes programs and projects, which proves to be a difficult task each year, as a balance must be struck each year between the cost to provide those services and the available revenues. In order to prioritize services and projects, the city regularly conducts a citizen survey and relies upon a strategic planning and goal-setting process. In order to provide context to which we prepare the 2023 budget, the city undertook a citizen survey and updated the strategic plan this year. The results of the survey found that 98.1% of residents rate the city as a good or excellent place to live, particularly that 98.9% of respondents cited the city as excellent or good to raise children. During 2022, the city updated its strategic plan as well, and the facilitators of our process will join the city council at the November 7th meeting, city council meeting, to detail the outcomes of our collaboration meetings. Five strategic priority areas weren't identified: strategic and cohesive commercial development, community connectivity and safety improvements, diversified recreation and cultural options and amenities, residential development and housing options, and community engagement. The department summaries goals and objectives included in the budget aligned with these strategic plan priorities. Sound financial management, traffic flow, stormwater management, maximization of city assets, and various other planning initiatives were hallmarks of the strategic long-term and short-term goals. The city, excuse me, the council and the city staff will work to operationalize this strategic plan during 2023. Regarding the budget, the city begins our process by distributing the five-year capital expenditure budget. The KEB is a capital planning process projecting capital projects over a five-year program. The city then overlays the KEB projects into the operating budget, making adjustments where resources dictate them. Regarding the operating budget, proposed revenues for the city of Elmhurst for fiscal year 2023 total $194,321,114. And as indicated, our largest revenue source are taxes and service charges comprising $89.3 million, or 54% of total revenues. Of this amount, 32.4% are taxes, while 21.3% are charges for service. Property taxes for the operations of the city remain flat as proposed and include a shift in the levy from fire and police pension to operating costs. Proposed expenditures for the city for fiscal year 2023 total $202,431,200. The two largest expense categories are salaries and wages at 17% and capital items at 28%. General fund revenue for 2023 totaled $73,566,608 and represents an increase of 3.5 million, or 5%, from the 2022 budgeted revenues. In total, the property tax levy remains flat from 2022 as proposed. Sales taxes, the largest overall revenue source in the general fund, increased by 1.8 million, or 10%. The city strongly rebounded from the pandemic in 2022, and the sales tax is estimated to end 2022 at $19.4 million, which is above the 2022 budget, excuse me, 2022 budget of $17.6 million. Late in 2022, the city began to see sales tax on automobiles decreasing, however. While sales prices of automobiles are at a high mark, according to some of our auto dealers, inventory cannot keep up with demand, placing pressure on this sector. They hope to see the industry catch up by 2024. This has led the city to keep the sales tax budget for 2023 flat from the 2022 estimated amount. The 2023 general fund budget includes $4.4 million in federal and state grants. Of this amount, $3.2 million is American Rescue Plan Act funds, which are allocated to the installation of the city's new Enterprise Resource Program software, parking garage improvements, and storm station improvements. Several revenues continue to rebound from the pandemic, including hotel tax, real estate transfer taxes, and food and beverage taxes. The proposed general fund budget expenditures are $79,991,765 for the 2023 fiscal year, an increase of 1.9 million, or 2.5% from the prior year. Capital budget prioritizes roadway, sidewalk, and infrastructure projects, which were noted areas in the citizen survey. Many vehicles, however, are deferred in 2023 due to limiting the overall budget increase, mitigating the exposure to high prices, and responding to the uncertainty of obtaining vehicles if they were budgeted for. Police vehicles have been prioritized for replacement due to their high use compared with the other municipal vehicles. Excess expenditures over revenues represents a deliberate use of fund balance of $6.4 million for projected general fund balance at the end of fiscal year 2023 of $11.9 million. This balance falls within the city's fund balance goal of 25% to 33% of operating expenditures. Moving into 2023, the city will need to address the imbalance in revenues, however, versus expenditures, and develop a plan to stay within that fund balance policy level. Regarding stormwater, it remains a key initiative of the city and was cited as an area to continue to work on in both the strategic plan and the citizen survey. In 2022, the city transferred funds from the general fund to cover the debt service for Stormwater Fund. City council, with the assistance of the Finance Committee, has been reviewing mechanisms for funding the Stormwater Fund into the future and has analyzed funding options. In 2022, the city council approved conducting a stormwater fee study to determine if a stormwater fee would be a preferable funding source for that debt service. The results of the study are anticipated in early 2023. As an example of project difficulties, the city had planned to rehabilitate the McKinley Storm Station in 2023 and bid the project in 2022. However, lead times on certain critical parts of the station have a 70-week lead time, and thus the project has been pushed to 2024. Regarding the municipal utility fund, the city council approved rate increases for the MUF, which will be effective December of 2022. The operating rates follow a rate study performed by Baxter and Woodman Engineering, which recommended setting rates for 2023 at $6.44 per 1,000 gallons for water and $8.18 per 1,000 gallons for treated sewer. The rates set forth by the study were designated to increase the MUF reserve balance towards a goal of 25%. While the city made some positive progress in 2021, the 2022 estimated actual and 2023 draft budget demonstrated that the city was veering off this positive path. Revenues have been lower than expected, and expenses are beginning to see the effects of inflation and supply-demand complications. The 2022 water main project was deferred as the city was unable to procure materials for the project. In order not to lose ground in growing a reserve, the city is also proposing to defer the water main project for 2023. The city plans to update the rate study in 2023 to realign with market conditions and to ensure the MUF fund remains on positive trajectory. In 2023, the MUF budget includes a $25 million capital project at the water reclamation facility to reconfigure the plant to remove phosphorus in the treatment process, which is a requirement from the federal and state environmental protection agencies by December 31st of 2030. The project will be paid for with a low-interest loan from the Illinois EPA. The city's capital investment recovery charges is a funding mechanism that the city has for its capital-related debt service. The CIRC rate will increase by 11% in 2023 to address this new project. Regarding the parking fund, parking revenues saw a sharp decline from the pandemic. Charges for service, which are permit and daily fee revenue, hit its lowest level in 2021 at 36% of pre-pandemic levels, as residents, of course, halted their commutes into downtown Chicago. As residents begin to return to work, this has increased in 2022, and charges for service are anticipated to be at 47% of pre-pandemic levels. However, many residents still work a portion of their work when they get home, and the city has seen a shift from annual permits to monthly and daily usage. The 2023 budget assumes that charges for service will reach 50% of pre-pandemic levels in 2023. The parking fund does include a transfer from general fund of $447,715. In 2023, the city plans on reviewing parking rates and forecasts for the parking fund. Next is tax increment finance funds. We have three TIF districts that have budgets for 2023. The North York redevelopment has a large capital component, as well as costs related to the sign improvement grant, retail grant, and facade programs. The North York roadway improvements project will be constructed in 2023, which includes the section of York from Crestview Avenue to Grand Avenue, with a cost of $3.525 million. The project is funded in part by federal grant, which will offset $2.816 million of the cost. The Church Road-Lake Street redevelopment includes costs related to industrial concrete resurfacing, sign improvement grant, retail business grant, and facade programs. Finally, the downtown TIF. Like the other two TIFs, the 23 budget provides for the sign improvement grant, retail business grant, and facade programs, in addition to streetscape improvements. The 2023 budget also anticipates expenditures for the Metro train station for the completion of Phase II engineering services, the First Street sanitary line replacement, and for signal improvements at the York and Arthur intersection. In 2021, the equalized assessed value in Elmhurst excluding the TIF areas grew 3%. Of this amount, 1.9% represents base growth, and 1.1% represents new construction. The average growth for the past four years is 4.8%. For the 22 levy collected in '23, the city has estimated growth of 4%. City continues to see a robust real estate market, however, increasing interest rates may temper that into 2023. Additional or new AAV from both residential and commercial building in the city positively impacts the community, as those new residents and businesses share in community costs. As part of the O'Hare submarket location, Elmhurst Business Parks continue to be highly sought after. The Monarch Business Park will open in 2022, providing over 430,000 square feet of office and warehouse space. Offering multiple shopping districts throughout the community, Elmhurst is likewise highly sought after for commercial users. Transit-oriented developments in the downtown city center remain popular as well. In 2022, construction began on the new development, The Vine, which will include 204 residences in the downtown. All this new development helps to grow our property tax base and diversifies the property tax liability of all of our local governmental units. I feel this fiscal plan continues to follow recovery from 2020, and, to the extent possible, emphasizes stormwater relief through several projects and policies, continues the city's roadway program, continues investment in economic development to promote Elmhurst growth, maintains current level of city services, and maintains the general fund levels within the fund balance policies. Presented is a sound fiscal plan for the city of Elmhurst for the next fiscal year, and I request the city council's positive consideration. I'd like to thank the city council for the responsible manager in which you oversee the finances of the city, and I'd also like to thank the finance staff, along with all the department directors and other management staff for their input and cooperation during the budget process. Thank you, Mayor. That concludes my overview.
All right. Are we moving on the agenda, or do you have additional comment?
We are moving on in the agenda to fire protection. I would ask Chief Anisovitz.
Protection is, we've got a lot of new people, new fire chief, police chief, finance director. All right. So I believe we're starting. Are we starting at page 2-32?
Correct.
All right. Chief, welcome, and do you want to proceed?
Sure, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Levin and City Council. Thank you for this opportunity to present the 2023 Fire Department budget to you. Before I get into the budget for next year, I wanted to share some of the great accomplishments our members did over this past year. The core mission of the Fire Department is always and continues to be the protection of life and property throughout our entire community. The support and commitment by you, the city council, allows our department to provide superior service to our residents, which is what they deserve. This year, the department has already responded to over 5,000 calls for service, which can be broken down into over 3,500 EMS runs and over 1,800 fire incidents. This is an average of 520 calls per month, or 17 calls per day, and continues to rise. Rescue One was implemented in 2017 and continues to provide beneficial services and helps reduce the need for mutual aid that would otherwise be requested from other towns. To accomplish our mission, we continue to put a great emphasis on training in order to keep our personnel prepared for any type of incident that presents itself. Most of the training is conducted at our training facility, which was built in the 1970s and upgraded in 2005. This facility is used not by only our members, but the Police Department, Public Works Department, and several surrounding agencies. The department continues to maintain its ISO Class I certification. This certification is based on the city's fire suppression, training, public education, fire prevention, and water distribution system. Utility Operations Manager Burris and the Public Works Division ensures each and every hydrant throughout the city has been checked and that it can provide the required flows when needed. Our Training Division has transitioned every member of the organization over to a new records management system called Target Solutions, and it is our training platform, and it is utilized by many of the surrounding agencies. This system is supported by the Illinois State Fire Marshal and ensures that each and every one of our members completes the minimum number of hours required that are set forth by the State Fire Marshal, the Illinois Department of Labor, and the Region 8 EMS Medical System. The Public Education Division, in conjunction with Communications Manager Cassandra Schreff, has developed several community outreach programs that were released this past year, such as the Pancake Breakfast that was used to introduce our annual report, Sparky's Ice Cream Social at Fire Station 2, Sparky's Kids Club, and the upcoming Junior Fire Academy, which will give students an opportunity to learn on what it takes to become a firefighter. We also have a New Year's Eve Kids Ball Jop Plan, and our open house just recently concluded, which we had over 700 residents attend. We also produce several videos that can be viewed on Elmhurst TV channel that pertain to life, safety, and fire prevention. These programs are all in addition to the CPR classes, child safety seat inspections, station tours, block parties, Safety Town classes that are held in conjunction with the Park District. In 2022, the Fire Department worked with the Human Resource Department to hire four new firefighters off the current eligibility list, and will begin recruiting for the next list, which is near its expiration. The applicant pool has significantly decreased the past few years, and there's a lot of planning and advertising that will go into this process. Finally, all chief officers within the department completed the executive leadership and coaching class presented at the Elmhurst Library through the Academy on Leadership, and our entire command staff attended the leadership training through the Illinois Fire Service Institute. Our goals for 2023 will always be to provide safety of all our members. The department will continue to develop strategies and implement training programs to enhance firefighter health, safety, and survival, specifically centered around peer support and mental health. I plan to host a first responder wellness day in 2023 at one of the fire stations. We will initiate programs to educate our personnel on cancer awareness and prevention, and we're working with the command staff and all members of the department to reimagine the Fire Department and consider services that can be provided to the community, such as mobile integrated healthcare checks, responding to behavior health emergencies, and offering assistance to senior citizens living in the community, and we will continue to evaluate the programs we are currently providing. In 2023, we will put in the service new mobile and portable radios that will be purchased through 911 service funds, purchased through the Emergency Telephone Systems Board. These new radios will increase the operability and reduce the maintenance costs associated with the old radios. The department would like to purchase a rescue squad to help offset the use of our ladder truck. This smaller vehicle will require less fuel and reduce the maintenance costs associated with the larger vehicle. The department is also looking to replace two command vehicles with vehicles that will require less maintenance and are more fuel-efficient. We will complete a target hazard assessment for the city and update resources as needed to ensure the Fire Department expands its capabilities as the city continues to grow. And I plan to initiate the Fire Department assessment process through the International Fire Chiefs Association. This assessment will use strategic planning to identify the strengths and weaknesses of the Fire Department and help improve our overall operations to ensure that we are providing the most effective and efficient services to our resident. I would now like to talk to you the capital expenditures budget, which will allow us to purchase and repair items for the department over the next five years. As you may recall from last year, the COVID-19 pandemic caused the Fire Department, as well as other departments throughout the city, to delay purchases that were not extremely critical to providing life safety services. Starting with line item 8023 in the capital expenditure budget, you will see a $375,000 request for repairs and improvements to the training facility. Our training facility is located on the north side of Elmhurst at 910 North Addison Road and was initially built in the 1970s. The training tower does generate revenue, and it is used by departments from all over Cook County and DuPage County. We have even hosted national firefighter safety and survival classes at this facility. This project originally began in 2017, when we had an outside consultant provide a scope of work and a plan to repair this facility. Due to the increased construction costs for both the work to be completed and the materials, I decided to delay the start of this project and was moved to 2023. We have received quotes for the cost to repair the tuck pointing, as well as replacing the entire two-story section of the building that was built decades ago. I'm going to continue to explore the most cost-effective ways to make these necessary improvements, and I will apply for grants that are available to help offset the cost of these repairs. I have requested $125,000 over a three-year period in the capital expenditure budget for this purpose. Line item 8006, we are due to replace one of our fire engines in 2023. The original plan was to purchase this vehicle in 2022, but it was put off again to the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic. I have been assessing the needs and the way the Fire Department responds to incidents in our city, and have recommended that this rescue squad be purchased to offset the wear and tear on a ladder truck. The ladder truck responds with our paramedics to assist throughout the incident, and this smaller vehicle is only a third of the cost of an engine and will require less maintenance and fuel. I am also looking at options for refurbishing an engine in 2023, which will provide several additional years of service life. There are three station cars that I am also requesting to be replaced in 2023. This will provide us, I will look at and all options and make the appropriate recommendations that will reduce the financial impact on the overall operating budget when the time comes to replace these vehicles. And finally, we do have a capital budget placeholder for a future development and relocation of Fire Station 1 in 2026. I will continue to evaluate that project and seek locations that would be fiscally responsible for the city, and that is the capital expenditure budget. As we go through the operating budgets on 2-32 and 2-323, I would like to point out a few specific line items. Line item 10-01 is for wages full-time. You will notice a drop in 2022 due to the fact that we had open positions. In 2023, you will see an increase that reflects the wage increase and the hiring of the four additional firefighters. Line item 10-02, wages part-time. You will see a significant decrease in the budget due to majority on the work being done by on-duty firefighters. We also had an open position in the Fire Prevention Bureau that has recently been filled. I have requested $90,000 in this line item in anticipation of new programs that will be offered to the community and to add a risk reduction training position that is not on shift to oversee the department training and fire prevention programs. Line item 10-03 is the overtime budget. This is overtime due to, this is over budget due to the fact that there were openings that were not filled, and we had to hire back to fill. Line item 10-06 is the sick leave payout. The sick leave is under budget, as individuals who are currently eligible to retire have decided to stay with the department. There are three justification forms that I've filled out. These justification forms are for account code 30-75, which is the telephone service. This increase is a change in allocation of the use of mobile and cellular data. Line item 50-01, which is for the billing, maintenance, and improvements to both Fire Station 1 and Fire Station 2. And line item 80-06, which is the increase in the cost for the purchases that we discussed in the capital budget for vehicle replacement. I truly thank you for supporting the Fire Department and its mission. I would also like to thank the firefighters and paramedics who go above and beyond each and every day to provide the services, deliver public safety programs, and respond to all the incidents in Elmhurst. At this time, I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Chief. Good presentation. I'll open it up to the committee of the whole for questions or comments. Alderman Hanquist.
Thank you, Mayor. So I have a few questions. First, kind of going to mutual aid, it's been a while since I've discussed this or been on committee. So can I get a short kind of review of that? So my understanding is, there's a fire in our community or surrounding communities, different fire departments will respond to that. So I'm curious, how far does that go out, and which communities respond to us, and which communities do we respond to?
Alderman Hanquist, on a day-to-day basis, we receive mutual aid from our neighboring departments, but Illinois has a MABUS agreement that is statewide, so if there's a large disaster, we can go to Utica, we can go anywhere throughout the state of Illinois, and MABUS has just secured an agreement with Indiana and Wisconsin as well. So if something is, a disaster is declared in one of those states, our MABUS division would be able to respond there as well. But for the day-to-day operations, we receive mutual aid for any type of fire call. It's automatic aid on an ambulance request. If our ambulances are tied up, we would receive an auto aid ambulance from one of our neighboring communities.
So how often does, how often do we respond to a, I guess, neighboring community, or they respond to us, on kind of average for, you know, the amount of calls we get?
On average, I would say that we respond out of town somewhere between 350 to 400 times per year, and we do respond more than we do receive. It's not significant. It seems like the most frequent town that we respond to is North Lake, to the assisted living facility off of North Avenue. I try to meet with the chiefs to make sure that no one is taking advantage of the resources that Elmhurst has, and if I do notice any uptick in requests from Elmhurst, we meet to discuss what we could do to solve that. So we always try to make sure that we are providing equal services and receiving equal services from our neighbors.
So when we respond in North Lake as an example, does that normally come from our north side fire station? north side fire station and they respond or does it matter?
Yes. Yeah, and then Rescue 1 would move to the north side station to cover any calls in that area.
Okay. And then I would assume if we're out, then Bensonville covers us or who would normally cover us in that scenario?
So depending on what district it may be in, we have a computer system that automatically selects the closest vehicle from the surrounding community and it would dispatch that vehicle to that incident.
Okay. So we've got, through these different agreements, we've got the ability to cover multiple areas in town from multiple locations. It's not just always Elmhurst.
Yes.
So next question. Is there a metric that the state, county, whatever uses for the number of firefighters, engines, apparatus to, say, the number of population or homes or businesses? Is there kind of a standard that they use for that?
It's a National Fire Protection Agency recommendation that will say how many firefighters you need within the first eight minutes on a residential house fire. And then there's another formula for a commercial building fire, and they have it for EMS responses as well, ALS and BLS.
Okay. And so when was the last time we kind of looked at the fire to those metrics? And then how does that correlate with the mutual aid? Do you understand my question?
We depend heavily on the mutual aid to get to that number. Elmhurst, on average, has 11 firefighters per day on shift, and the recommendations are a lot higher than that, especially on a commercial building. So that's why all the departments in our area, we all have the same amount of resources that we request on a fire, whether it's in Elmhurst, any town in DuPage County will get the same amount of equipment dispatched to a structure fire, and then it goes to a second alarm for a commercial building and you'll get the same amount of resources, no matter what community it's in for that fire response. The last time, we're currently in the midst of a staffing study, which will take a look at the NFPA recommendations. And before that, it's... We try to keep that in mind every time that we're figuring out these responses. We were graded in 2017 on our ISO rating, and that played into the rating as well. They take a look at how many people and apparatus are on the scene of a structure fire, and they also look at the response to EMS.
Okay. Two more questions. If, I assume through this process, if we were a community, say, far west that was very rural, that these metrics would change in some way? Is that true? And would, you know, how do they balance if you're kind of in a very isolated area? Does the number or requirement go down because there's less structures and less people? Is that kind of how the formula works?
It's all a recommendation. They can't enforce it or fine you for not having the personnel. It's what they recommend that you have on the scene. And there are departments that are far south that do not have the ability. It's, you know, maybe a volunteer department that is not able to staff it in that specific amount of time. But for all departments in the metro area, we follow the NFPA recommendations as best as we can and rely on mutual aid to fill the gaps where they are.
Okay. Final question on the budget itself. So it looks like our pension liabilities are about one-third of our budget on an annual basis. If that's true, is that held for quite some time, say, the last couple of decades? And then the next question is, will that hold for the next couple of decades, just as a percentage?
As far as the percentages go, I think it depends. We transitioned our pensions to the downstate system, depending on the process that they use. If it's the same as when it was in-house managed by a local agency, some of the fees and the way that the funds are managed have changed. So I'm not sure if that number will stay fixed. And obviously, the market's going to dictate some of the returns as well. We had committed to funding it to a percentage over the next, by 20... Was it 2040? Was it 2030? So we'll have to continue to assess that and take a look at where the budget or the pension numbers are at at that time.
Okay. And you might not have this, and that's fine if we can bring it back. But of the communities in Illinois, do we have any idea how many actually meet their pension obligation versus do not meet their pension obligation?
That I definitely can get that information for you. I don't know off the top of my head, but we can definitely circle back on that.
All right, great. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Honquist. Anyone else? Alderman Dunn.
Yes, I was just wondering, with the Fire Protection District 1 that we have in the northeast area of town, there was some potential that we may not provide that service. They were going to combine with the Bensonville facility or the Bensonville Fire Protection District. What budgetary impact would we see? I don't know if that's been resolved at this point, but would we see a budgetary impact on the expense side here? And then obviously, we'd see something on the revenue side because we wouldn't be getting, you know, payment from them.
So the agreement has been approved by the council to have the fire department provide service to District 1, again, in that area. There is a bill that is still trying to be moved forward. It has not yet passed. If there was a reason that that did go through, we are working on an agreement with Bensonville Fire District Number 2, which would actually allow us to collect additional funding. Right now, we collect around $108,000 a year with the current staffing that we have. So we don't add any additional staffing to provide service to District 1 right now, but they do provide us payment for those services. And then we also collect for the ambulance billing that we provide into that area. If it was to be dissolved and Elmhurst was cut out of the agreement, we would be out at $108,000. Everything that both myself and the manager have worked on has been that the agreement will stay in place and we will move forward with continuing to provide the services to that district.
Got you. Okay. So that's less than 1% of our budget, so it's really of inconsequential impact. It's not like we would reduce staffing because of it.
Correct.
Alderman Deuter.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, you talked about in 2023, a purchase of a rescue squad, and you used the words to offset the use of the ladder truck.
Correct.
Would the rescue squad be an additional vehicle? It's not replacing something already. It's truly added to try and reduce the use of the ladder truck?
Yes. It would be a smaller vehicle that would carry a lot of the equipment that is on a ladder truck, things that we would use for accidents with extrication, hazmat, technical rescue, and EMS response. And it would have the two firefighters that would normally be in the truck respond in that vehicle. And we would reserve the ladder truck for use on structure fires.
Okay. And I'm looking at the back of the cab or the list of vehicles. It looks like that.
What page, Alderman?
I'm looking at page 122 of the cab.
Thank you.
The list of vehicle purchases looks like the rescue squad is about 380,000. Does that sound?
It's come down a bit. I anticipated a larger vehicle with a pump on there, and we decided to go with a strict rescue vehicle without a pump, so it would be a rescue squad. The average, the estimate for that vehicle is between 215,000 to 250,000.
215 to 250.
To 250.
Okay. Thanks for that information.
Chief, were these proposed savings in terms of the implementation of a... or the purchase of a new vehicle and how you calculated the savings in wear and tear on the larger vehicle? Was that something that was discussed in committee?
Not yet. Well, I've worked with Butch Wanderer, Fleet Supervisor, to look at what the vehicles are costing us in maintenance and repairs. And some of our vehicles are pushing the 20-year mark. So in, by buying this rescue squad, again, that'll help offset some of the wear and tear on the ladder truck, but we're looking at refurbishing one of our oldest engines so that we will be able to... What they'll do is they'll rebuild the frame, the wiring, the pump, and it'll be like a new engine coming off the assembly line to us, and we'll be able to get seven to 10 years additional service out of this vehicle.
I think it'd be helpful to present that to PAS and let them dive into it a little bit and make sure we fully understand where the savings work out. Not saying they don't, but I just want to make sure we all understand, but it sounds like a good concept. All right. Additional discussion. Alderman Brennan.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, so I'm on page 234 for the other Alderman. So as I look at this, a station vehicle, could you just define that for me? I'm not quite sure.
So we have a battalion chief vehicle that's used for incident command and on all incidents that will park in front of the building, and the battalion chief will take command of the incident and work out of that vehicle. So that vehicle is due for replacement, and then that vehicle would go into reserve to replace one of the older utility vehicles that we use for fire prevention inspections, training, public education events. Our members are always traveling to and from the station to attend different functions. So we have one command vehicle and two support vehicles that are scheduled to be replaced.
Got you. So those are like expeditions?
Most of them, yes. One was a pickup truck.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. And along the lines of the smaller rescue pumper, where would that be located? Which station?
Ladder 2 has been noticed as the busiest truck in DuPage County. It's taken a beating and going on all these EMS calls and assisting with fire alarms and fires and all the different responses that it does go to. So right now, it seems most beneficial to be at Station 2 to help take some of the miles off Ladder 2.
Okay. Thank you. So along the rescue pumper, so I'm not a fireman, obviously. So as you looked at alternatives, and I just looked online what a rescue pumper looks like, and there's a whole bunch of different ones. I mean, were there other alternatives considered that might be cheaper, more nimble, but still satisfy, you know, everything that you described as a requirement?
Right. So what originally was, again, like I said, we were going to look at replacing a fire engine because our oldest engine is from 2002. But we said, instead of spending that type of money in the $700,000 range, if we could do something less expensive, a rescue pumper is what you had mentioned, has the pump on it. We went even, you know, tried to look at how to save additional money, and we took the pump off. And again, that's for... We took a look at how it would be utilized and what we could utilize it for. A vehicle of this size and the tank capacity and what you would be able to, like hose, the amount of hose you'd be able to put on it, it wouldn't be beneficial to spend the additional money having two engines in Elmhurst. So this would work well as just a rescue squad without the pump and carry all the extra equipment that may be needed to assist on our most frequent type of calls.
So there's not a vehicle that would be smaller than that that would satisfy the requirement?
You know, you can get like a pickup truck, you know, but then you're looking at open compartments. And I think for what we need and the equipment that we have for the fire department, it needs to be kept enclosed in cabinets. We'll have EMS accessories on there, expensive extrication equipment, technical rescue equipment, like I had mentioned, hazmat. And this would be the most fiscally responsible way of responding with firefighters and having the equipment be able to lock up in cabinets. It's a Ford F-550 chassis, and you can see that these are becoming more expensive. And when you start adding the cabinets and the light package to it, it increases the cost. So again, we're right now, one of the lowest bids I had was 215,000, and then there's, they go up to 250. If you want additional generators and things on there, they can go even higher.
So last question. So the 215 to 250 range includes all the apparatus items that you described, the jaws or, you know, whatever. Is it fully equipped?
Well, we have the equipment at the station already that would be put on that vehicle. So it would be the vehicle that we're purchasing, but we already have the equipment purchased that would be pulled off of the truck and put on this vehicle.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
City Treasurer.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, in your intro comments, you had mentioned some perhaps advertising for increased staffing. Does that show up in this, the fire budget or elsewhere?
It would be under the communications budget, and we work with Cassandra to market. And we've done small videos to help with recruitment at the station. So it's not like we're hiring any company to come in and shoot any videos. It's mostly the firefighters and myself that'll try to, you know, encourage other members of the community and do an outreach to different schools to let people know that we're hiring.
Okay. And then global question, perhaps to the finance department that would assist with the rest of, as we go through here, estimated amounts are through... What are the actual dates on the estimated amounts in that column?
So the estimated amounts that are from departments would probably be as of the time we started having budget submissions, which would be around the August timeframe, July, August timeframe. There would be some amounts in the budget, you know, that we, as we have more information that becomes available, we do update those where we know they need changed, kind of up into the date of publication.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Tolu.
Thank you. Obviously, with the big line item, the vehicles are getting a lot of attention. Could you answer, does every community have a ladder truck?
No. No, not every community. Elmhurst has been fortunate, you know, for years and years to have a ladder, a tower and a ladder truck. And we were able to get a very reasonable price on a ladder truck in 2018 when we replaced it, our old one. At the time, we were looking again to replace an engine, and for, it was around $200,000 additional to purchase the ladder truck because we bought a demo unit that was really basic. We didn't have any of the extra lighting generators, you know, the, it was a steel ladder versus an aluminum ladder. And it was just a bare bones ladder truck that we purchased at the time. So we still, again, we have both of those. We're very fortunate, and I'm trying to keep the wear and tear off of them so they last a long time.
May I keep going? And so forgive me, I also, you know, I'm not as educated, I'm not a firefighter. A tower and a ladder, can you just briefly explain the differences?
Sure. The tower has the basket on the end of it to where firefighters can stand, and, you know, if it's positioned properly, they can take and remove victims and bring them into the basket. A ladder truck is specifically a ladder that would go up to a roof so firefighters can climb and perform ventilation and can be used at windows, but we would have to carry and walk the victims down, you know, on the ladder or put them in a basket to help bring them to the ground.
And so based on that explanation, both a ladder and a tower provide access to higher-story buildings?
Correct.
So if we only had one or the other, a tower or a ladder, but not both, we would not diminish our ability to access higher-level stories, structures in town? Is that true or not?
That's true.
So with the addition of this rescue squad to reduce the wear and tear on the ladder truck, could we remove the ladder truck from our service and our need to continue to maintain it and literally sell it? We would still have a tower truck, and then the rescue squad would replace and be staffed by those two firefighters that typically drive the ladder truck?
That would not be my recommendation. For the amount of time that one of the trucks is out of service, it's nice to have that reserved truck. Like right now, our ladder truck is out having an outrigger replaced, and will be out for several weeks. If we weren't to have the other truck, we would be without service of a truck to provide the response to the community. The rescue squad would be used to offset the purchase and push that purchase off to 2039, I believe, is in the budget. So we're very fortunate to have a good fleet division that maintains our vehicles, and by doing this, I think it's going to buy us some time. I wouldn't recommend eliminating one at this time.
You know, Mayor, you had asked for the cost estimates of the maintenance and whatnot to be brought to PA and S. Is that something that we could have as a circle back to committee of the whole?
Sure.
With, you know, whenever we get to give enough time to, for the... It sounds like you already have the information in terms of the reduction in maintenance costs to the ladder truck and whatnot?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. If you can give us specifics that you're looking for, not tonight, but if you could just send Chief an email... you could just send Chief an email of what you're looking for specifically, we can get that together.
Well, it's the cost justification of the analysis that Chief shared has been done, which is the reduction in the maintenance costs of the ladder truck and how that justifies the expenditure of adding another vehicle of $250,000 to our fleet. Thank you.
I think, I mean, you can bring it back, but I would like you to go to committee and have them thoroughly consider what you're talking about as well as the vehicle justification because it is a large line item. I'm not saying it's justified or not justified, I'm just saying that I'd like to have them vet it a little bit more carefully. Alderman Palmsky.
Thank you. I know usually when we talk about fire trucks, we have an understanding of they, when they go out, a certain number of firefighters have to be on them. If there's a scenario where we need a ladder truck and let's see extraction too, so will we run into a position where the ladder truck is out and then also the service vehicle is out? And will this turn into, will there be any, I guess, understanding that there must always be two people attached to that service vehicle? Or is it just whoever would typically be on the ladder truck would go to the service vehicle?
That's a great question and one of the things that can happen is if that truck, if that ladder truck was on a call in town for something other than a fire, it could go on another type of fire response. And a call came in that was requested either out of town or in Elmhurst, the firefighters that are assigned to the engine company at Station Two could switch to that ladder company to staff it. And then we would take an engine company from Station One and move it to the south side. So we're always filling and backfilling, along with Alderman Hanquist's question earlier with mutual aid and auto aid. If a rig is dispatched, the countywide dispatch system looks at all the vehicles in an area and then it'll backfill. But again, in Elmhurst, we had the two trucks and if one was on a call, that second one can be dispatched and we would probably work out, we would not leave a call unanswered and not send the truck. We would shift the personnel over to let that unit respond and then we would shift a rig from the north side station to the south side.
Please, thank you. May, thank you, that's helpful. But I'm also curious to know if this may, could there be any implications for need for additional staff if there, additional firefighters? Okay, if there are potentially somebody on a ladder truck and somebody also doing extraction that would happen at the same time?
Yeah, this would be more of a jump company design. So when this is not being utilized, if they were on the rescue squad, we could still fill a truck with the north side truck. But if they're on that truck, then the rescue squad would be parked. It would not be like another additional company.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Mulliner.
Just a simple question, a simple explanation. A ladder truck is not just for reaching high locations, my understanding is. Is it not only for the purpose of also reaching homes so that if they're far away, they can get over the top of the home? I just, can you explain that to us?
That's correct. And with the setbacks that we have in Elmhurst, the lot dimensions, we use the ladder trucks quite often to reach the roof. We recently had a lightning strike that was used, the ladder truck goes, and the ladder truck also carries hose and all the other additional equipment on it that we use on a day-to-day basis for all our responses. So you're correct, it's not just for commercial buildings, it's for residential as well.
Okay. Follow-up, second question. With the increase in the number of electric vehicles, what have we done to prepare for that? We know that as we're listening in Florida, we're hearing a lot more fires with the electric vehicles. What are we doing in Elmhurst to be prepared for that?
We continue to look at it and we're trying to transition into that area. They do have electric fire engines that are not really tested well at this point. There's a few of them onto the market and I worked with the Pierce representative who said that at this time, he doesn't recommend the purchase because some of the bugs are still being worked out and you still have to use the gas engine or diesel engine when you're pumping on the scene anyway. So it would be solar powered to and from the.
Okay, so let me go back to my question. Misunderstood it.
Sure.
Question is, with the number of electrical vehicles that are catching on fire, I'm talking about home, commercial vehicles are catching on fire. We have to be prepared to fight those fires and what are we doing in order to be prepared to fight those fires?
So we have all the equipment that we need. We currently respond to these vehicle fires on the expressway and we have the phone and agreements with tankers and tenders in the area that if it was a fire that we were having difficulty putting out, we would call in mutual aid for have enough water supply to put the fire out. We do not have anything set up for what like Florida is going through with all those that were submerged and now they're having fires from short circuiting in these vehicles. We're learning from what's coming out of the hurricane and we'll address that and make sure that our members understand the training that goes along with that.
Okay, thank you. Additional questions? Alderman Brennan.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, you know, the equipment, you, they take, require maintenance, any vehicle does. Is that line item in the?
For the vehicles or equipment, like hand tools?
Vehicles.
Yeah, equipment is under, yeah, Garage and Central Services, 9503.
Okay, got it. All right, so it's 338, thank you. And so that has gone up over this year because the vehicles are getting older? Is that what's anticipated?
I believe it's a combined maintenance. There was, one of the ladders had an issue with the cabling, so it may be a one-off on expenditure for this year. But the fleet is getting older and is requiring more maintenance, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And Alderman, if I can add, for both of those data processing and Central Garage Services, that's one that we allocate to each department based on either number of PCs you have or number of vehicles that you have.
For the data processing, but not 9503, right?
Yes, Garage Services, Central Garage Services, we allocate basically by number of vehicles, even though fire department has larger, maybe more complicated, we allocate that by the number of vehicles that they have.
So how do we know how much expense we actually have in maintenance of the vehicles?
There's a fleet management software system that is used at the garage and we know every time a vehicle's touched and what's done to it and the dollar amount associated with it.
Could we add that to the circle back?
Sure. And the specific question is you'd like to know the maintenance expenditures?
You know, the annual operation of the big rigs, if you will, I mean, what that looks like.
Would you like to go for 21 and 20?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hanquist, Alderman Hanquist.
One thing I forgot to, just, I know you, when you publish the annual fire report, I'm curious, the number of fires we're now getting, because you put a lot of calls out there, that are for fire or for extraction? And then curious also to go back, you know, 10 to 20 years so we can kind of see a trend on that, because usually the annual report just does that year. So that was one thing I forgot to ask you, if I could get that on circle back.
Sure. Alderman Jensen.
Thank you, Mayor. So Chief, I was wondering on the question about EV fires versus gasoline vehicle fires, do you have any data that shows how many fires there are in EVs versus gasoline-powered vehicles? Because I wasn't aware that there was a big issue where EV vehicles catch on fire more than gasoline-powered ones. Do you have data on that?
I would be able to get some for you off the top of my head. I just know what the recently, what's going on with the ones that were submerged in Florida and the issues that they're having and we're just kind of keeping an eye on what's coming out of there and I'll be able to get you some data on that.
So if we had like a big flood or something, then we might have the issue here then, but otherwise we're kind of okay?
Sure.
Fair enough.
It's a hazard for us when we're responding on a vehicle fire. Again, to your point, there's not anything that says, hey, an electrical vehicle catches fire more than a gas-powered. It's just that the hazards that are there, when we're putting water on it or going to cut a roof to open it up so we get to the engine compartment, that's what we have to be aware of and we treat it differently than we would a gas-powered fire.
Got it, thank you.
So.
Good thing we've done flood mitigation. Okay, Alderman Dunn.
I'm just wondering, are we going to cover metro services somewhere in the budget? I thought it would be here, but I'm just wondering where that is. If it's somewhere else and we're covering it later, that's fine. Okay.
Additional conversation?
And I would just say that we were planning on coming to committee with this the whole time. I just wanted to give an update on what we requested. So I was planning to bring this to committee in all along.
I just, one other question and you may talk about it more in committee. My recollection is that we had a larger ladder truck a few years back and we got rid of it and got a, when Chief Freeman was here, and I remember the committee public affairs and state asking, you're sure this one is as tall as we need? So is that the replacement truck we still have that we're speaking of?
That's right, yes.
All right, thank you. You can further inquire in committee if you like. All right. Other conversation, questions on this particular part being fire protection? All right, we have a few circle backs. We'll move on to wireless radio. Chief, are?
The paramedic contract is covered under human and health services, which is scheduled for November 7th meeting.
Gotcha, thanks.
All right, wireless radio, which would be on page three dash, two dash three five.
Okay, Mayor, this account deals with the wireless alarm radios that monitor the fire alarms throughout the entire city and it's, has a justification form that related to the cost increase for the fees charged by DUCOM, which is the dispatch facility that's used throughout the county and the wireless alarm monitoring fees. This increase was applied to all agencies equally and there was also an increase in the maintenance contract that we have through Johnson Controls. So you will see that it did go up under other services from 154 to 162, too.
And there's an income line associated from what the businesses pay?
Yes, on the revenue side, there is an income.
All right, and might just, so is this, this is just commercial alarms?
Correct.
All right, and just so the council knows, can you point out where the revenue side comes in?
It is.
Now explain, so our businesses are required.
Two dash seven.
Two dash seven? Yeah, our businesses are required to have these alarms, they pay the fee, so it's, I guess it's a break even. Is this a enterprise sort of operation?
Not really.
Actually, I'm sorry, two dash eight, two dash seven is for fire protection services, two dash eight, 2500 is the fire protection services.
Okay, we'll open up for any questions.
So 26 dash 00.
Maybe I'm, so the, it's part of that, is that what you're saying?
That's the revenue that's collected from the fees that we charge. And then the expenditures is on page two dash 33, I'm sorry, two dash 35.
I'll guess, I'll ask the question, but, so we're collecting, you know, this year 576 and we're spending 175. I thought I knew this stuff, but.
That is for fire inspection services, permit fees and things?
Okay, that's right, all right.
If I can interject.
Alderman Dunn.
We had this in front of the Finance Committee about two months ago, I think. And there's indirect costs associated with the alarms. That's why there's a difference in the revenue versus the actual DUCOM cost, because there's a lot of calls, a lot of false alarms that are costly.
Thank you. We won't send that one to committee then. Other questions, discussion? All right. Emergency services?
Okay, that's page two dash 37. There was an increase in the wages for a part-time coordinator, Don Novak. The remaining services have remained pretty much status quo.
Any questions, comments?
Some of the equipment that you see there for parts and radio parts used for the mobile incident command vehicle.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Chief. So you said the mobile command vehicle is at essentially the Central Garage Services charge of 95 dash 03 for service to the mobile command vehicle?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And just a follow-up question, supplies have gone down? I'm just, maybe want to understand a little bit more. So our Civil Defense Department is more of a coordination agency rather than stockpiling, but they don't hold much in the way of supplies, so that's, or at least perishables, I have it.
Correct, yeah. And this was more of a general fund under other supplies we used to buy emergency products for other departments throughout the city, not only the fire department. So this was sort of a fund that helped to cover the expenses for barricades and some of the signage for different events and things that are going on throughout the city.
Thank you, Chief.
Learn something new every year. Other, other discussion on emergency services? All right, Chief, I think.
Thank you, everyone.
Move on to Police Department. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to thank the City Council for their continued support for the Elmhurst Police Department as we maintain high-quality police services for the residents of Elmhurst. We continue to focus on our main objectives of crime suppression, traffic safety and community policing as our focus. Some highlights for 2022 that I'd like to go over include, as of October 1st, when most of our statistics have been most recently updated, the Police Department has provided service to residents on 30,912 incidents. That constitutes approximately 114 calls for service per day and those continue to be a mix of resident-initiated calls, 911 calls for service and police-initiated incidents, incidents where the officers initiate the activity, like a traffic stop or an extra patrol. The breakdown of those continued police services are 46% for calls for service relating to 911 calls and 54% related to police-initiated activities. The department has investigated and filed 194 criminal felony charges and 260 criminal misdemeanor charges and 284 citations have been issued for violations of local Elmhurst ordinances. At this point in the year, we have investigated 865 traffic collisions. When it comes to what this means for the residents of Elmhurst, in 2022, so far, our UCI Unified Crime Report statistics indicate that we have no homicides, eight sexual assault reports, four robbery, 13 aggravated assault and battery reports, 27 burglary, 300 theft reports, five motor vehicle thefts and one arson, for a total of 358 year-to-date UCR crimes. UCR crimes are how the Police Department and all police departments throughout the nation track their crime data so that they can tell if crime is going up, is crime going down or is crime flat. So as this data relates to the overall picture in Elmhurst, we're currently trending a median average between 2020 and 2021 year stats. Still historically low when you look back over the last 12 years and within the normal reporting that's occurred over the last two. Good police work is done by officers and our officers continue to do proactive police work in Elmhurst by doing directed patrols of our businesses, facilities and infrastructure. So far this year, officers have done 1,561 of those directed patrols. We continue to utilize the latest in technology to provide the best police service to the residents of Elmhurst. Our automated license plate reader program has successfully interdicted 29 stolen vehicles, 16 of which were recovered with the offenders in custody and criminally charged. 16 of which were recovered with the offenders in custody and criminally charged, the remainder fleeing the city. Additionally, 11 crime suspect vehicles were interdicted. Those are vehicles belonging to suspects who have committed a prior crime in Elmhurst and alerts our officers that they're back. We've located two missing persons and arrested three wanted fugitives with the alerts of the license plate reader system. That's overall a small slice of what the ALPRs have done for us. We continue to use it in our Investigations Division as a tool for developing leads and solving criminal cases. We also continue to partner with our Police Department Social Worker, Steve Burr. He responds to and provides services for 87 crisis cases. The social services provided involve juveniles, amount to illness, family incidents, neighborhood disputes, and death notifications. The Traffic Safety Unit, the Traffic Safety Unit was fortunate to have new equipment that was provided to it to utilize traffic data recorders to get a better picture of traffic safety issues in neighborhoods, and the assistance of two new traffic safety interns from local universities was a great help to us as we address neighborhood traffic concerns. The prescription drug collection box and take-back events that the city of Elmhurst has utilized, collected 574 pounds of prescription medication so far. That's performed in a partnership with the DuPage County Health Department. It not only prevents prescription drugs from falling into the hands of unwanted, falling in the hands of people that might utilize them, but also it prevents our water supply locally in Elmhurst from becoming contaminated. The staffing situation in the Elmhurst Police Department continues to be challenging, but we have hired eight full-time officers and two full-time community service officers in the last 10 months. At this point, we have six vacant positions, but we began a new lateral hiring program several months ago to bring new officers to the Elmhurst Police Department and staff to our budgeted strength. Community policing and neighborhood outreach continues to be a focus of the Elmhurst Police Department. We had a very successful neighborhood roll call year with 21 neighborhood roll calls and just under 1,000 residents coming to participate in the neighborhood roll calls. We also brought back Public Safety Night to Barron's Park over this past summer, inviting residents to come meet our police officers, and we partnered with the local public safety agencies in Elmhurst to include Elmhurst Hospital Public Safety and Elmhurst University. The fire department was there and was a great help as well. I'm happy to report that the DARE program has been brought back, and it's now back in Elmhurst schools after a hiatus due to the COVID-19 pandemic, and the Seniors and Law Enforcement Together program for our seniors is also back after a hiatus due to COVID. We continue to value our partnerships with numerous police departments and local and county agencies. We are, we continue to be members of the DuPage Merit Task Force and the Chicago and NIPUS Task Force. This provides services to Elmhurst in case any one incident is so great that we need assistance to provide for public safety, and those partnerships continue to serve Elmhurst very well. Expectations for 2023? We have several new programs that will begin next year. The first of which I'll highlight will be the Police Body Cam Program. The Illinois Safety Act mandates that all police departments in the state of Illinois have their officers equipped with body cameras. Our deadline to complete this program is January 1st, 2025. We'll begin this program next year. In the budget, you'll notice that we have funds set aside out of our Federal Forfeiture Fund and our DUI Tech Fund to pay for a new body camera program and squad car camera program that are integrated to work together. On the backend of this system will be a digital evidence storage system to allow for the recording, redaction, and transmittal of video evidence for prosecutions at County We also have several new mandates from the state of Illinois. In addition to the body cams due to the Safety Act, we'll be implementing new training, certification, and procedures for our officers to be in compliance with the new law. We'll also be implementing new technologies that have recently been approved to include evidence processing, digital crime scene scanning, and police drone public safety programs. We recently were approved for our 2023 IDOT Sustained Traffic Enforcement Program grant. This IDOT program provides funds to Elmhurst Police Department to provide additional traffic safety enforcement hours through overtime in the city of Elmhurst. Enforcement is focused on DUI laws, safety belt laws, and distracted driving laws. We're going to continue to maintain at least a minimum 40 hours of annual training per sworn officer, though many officers far exceed that, depending on their specialties and assignments within the police department. We're also going to send two new police supervisors to Northwestern School Police Staff and Command Training to further their education. We'll continue to research and establish a formal plan to meet the facility needs for the Police Department. That begins in the capital budget with $1.5 million for design and engineering related to the Police Department building needs. As you recall, in 2018, a consultant performed a study of the Elmhurst Police Department. That consultant's report was reviewed by the Public Affairs and Safety Committee, and it established basically three options for the needs of the Police Department. There are some immediate needs regarding outdated equipment, HVAC needs, some structural issues that need to be addressed within the Police Department soon. And then there's also a space needs issue. The report basically indicated that the Police Department requires approximately 20,000 square feet of space and proposed several options, addition, renovation, or just fixing the current issues related to the Police Department. Our city license plate reader program has become quite large, which is a good thing. It protects the majority of the city. However, we need to secure and maintain a contract with a servicer to maintain the license plate readers. The technology involves cameras and servers that are placed outside on poles 24/7, 365 days a year in the heat and the cold, and they do require some maintenance to maintain their protective value throughout the city. So it's the Police Department's request to engage in a service agreement with a contractor to provide maintenance for those license plate readers that are outside of warranty. The, the replacement of vehicles in the Police Department fleet have been challenging since the pandemic began and continue to be so. We recently, we recently learned that our 2022 order of police squad cars was canceled by the manufacturer and has been moved into 2023. So in the vehicle purchase line item of the budget, under the capital, our vehicles will include 2022 squad cars, six vehicles that are moved into 2023 in the 2023 order. Many of the frontline Police Department vehicles are in excess of 100,000 miles, with some approaching 140,000 miles. So we appreciate fleets and the city moving Police Department vehicles as a priority action item. New programs for the Police Department moving into next year include the development of a recruitment team to focus on community outreach, public speaking engagements, and professional recruiting of new police officer candidates. This is not a contractual item. This is not an outsourced item. We're looking to create a specialty post where existing officers who have excellent communication skills will be able to go visit high schools, colleges, universities, sporting events, and recruit new people to be Elmhurst Police Officers in the future. The days of simply putting up a posting and having hundreds of people show up to take your police test are unfortunately behind us, and really a new focused effort needs to be made to directly recruit new officer candidates, including on the lateral side, speaking to new officers with other departments and inviting them to take our test and learn more about our agency. We're also working on developing an officer wellness program. I truly believe that if wellness is not your first priority, then the rest of your goals that you have for your employees don't matter. So what we are continuing to do is focus on the wellness of our police officers as a retention tool. We continue to utilize the services of Steve Burr to provide services to our officers, but we're fortunate that locally, the DuPage County Sheriff's Office received a grant to do training for peer support team members. So there's a very close local resource, and we've already sent our first two officers to attend training, in hopes that we can build a team over the next few months to have peer support team members on each shift. So moving on to page 2-39, the Police Department's budget. I just want to outline a few items to the council. Line item 3018 is a large line item related to DUCOM. DUCOM is the Consolidated Dispatch Center that provides services to our agency and the fire department. We pay a quarterly fee based off of our allotted budget strength of officers. That is the agreed-upon method by which police departments are billed for DUCOM services. It also includes a facility fee for the new DUCOM facility that DUCOM moved into several years ago in Wheaton. Under contract staffing, line item 30-92, that line item, the majority of those services are related to the Andy Frain Crossing Guard contract. You may recall, in 2020, the city began engaging with Andy Frain to provide crossing guard services for the crossings within the city of Elmhurst. The purpose behind that was, for many years leading up to that point, we were having difficulty hiring people to perform crossing guard services. Additionally, when there were sick calls and vacancies within the crossing guard system, it was difficult for the city to have people immediately step into that role without impacting the operations of other departments within the city. So it was decided to move to a contracted service provider for crossing guard services. Line item 30-98, other services. That line item, the majority of that fee goes to the ETSB for the DUGIS system, which is the consolidated system for records management for our law enforcement agencies in DuPage County, police reports, calls for service, related records for dispatching and record Line item 4031, minor equipment includes allotted dollars to replace some of our oldest license plate reader cameras. We installed our first license plate reader cameras in Elmhurst in 2016. Those cameras are now starting to show their wear and are requiring replacement at their current locations. Line item 50-17, listed for radios. Just as the fire department indicated, the Police Department as well is getting new portable radios for all its police officers. These radios are being paid for by the DuPage ETSB. However, there are small related costs to some fixed equipment within the police station that we will have to purchase, basically chargers for our radio batteries and a few additional radios that won't be covered by the ETSB. Line item 6027 for forfeiture expenses. That includes a $250,000, that line item plus the DUI tech fund expenditure, 6075. $250,000 of that expenditure is for the new body cam and dash cam program. Historically, the Police Department has paid for its squad car camera system out of DUI tech funds, the 6075 line item, and we want to maintain that, that process. DUI tech pays for electronic equipment related to the enforcement of DUI offenses. For many, many years, squad car cameras have been determined to be crucial in prosecuting DUI cases, therefore those fund expenditures for those dash cams are very appropriate. And then for the new body cam program, we're going to utilize federal forfeiture funds in our 6027 account to pay for the new body cams required by the Safety Act. Now, it's important to indicate, we have not identified a specific vendor or manufacturer to purchase these body cams or squad cams yet. It is our intent to go through an RFP process at the beginning of next year to determine who the vendors will be and what the exact expenditures will be. There are options for these pieces of equipment to include outright purchase by the Police Department or leasing options. There's also different options for data storage. So I feel confident that we have the right amount of funds allotted to be able to pick the best option for Elmhurst moving forward. However, the city may choose to enter into a lease agreement instead of an outright purchase that would be lower per year than what I've indicated in these numbers. Moving into the capital outweigh for vehicles under 8006, as I indicated towards my introduction, squad car purchased vehicles from 2022 will move forward into 2023, and we're also proceeding with our 2023 vehicle order. It'll be hard to predict the future as far as which vehicles the manufacturers will be able to actually manufacture and deliver to us. We've been very challenged over the last couple of years regarding ordering vehicles and unfortunately them not being manufactured in the first place or our orders canceled. So we'll have to see exactly how that turns out next year. And then finally, 8023, that's the $1.5 million indicated to engage with a firm to do study and engineering for potential building improvements to the Elmhurst Police Station. Finally, I'd like to thank the staff of the Elmhurst Police Department for providing the best, as they have always done, and they continue to do in 2023, and I look, or in 2022, and I look forward to an excellent next year.
Thank you, Chief. Open it up to the council. Alderman Brennan.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief. I'm on page 2039, item 3018. So DUCOM, I think you indicated the cost of DUCOM is based off of, you know, number of calls? Okay. Could you explain how the DUCOM cost is calculated, or the algorithm?
So, police calls do not figure into the number for our, our budget billing from DUCOM. It's actually based off our full-time sworn number of officers. So basically, it's, they base what they bill off the size numerically of the staff of the Police Department of sworn officers. So basically, our budgeted amount of 68 full-time officers determines what that number becomes. Every Police Department pays the same depending on that ratio.
I see. So you had mentioned a new DUCOM facility, so that, that's just, they're probably recouping that cost in their per officer charge?
Yeah, so that, that is a, a change that occurred a few years ago. DUCOM moved into a new facility. They needed additional funds beyond what they actually had in the bank, per se. So an annual facility fee has been added over the last few years to DUCOM fees for police departments.
So when we, in 2020, when we went from 618 to, you know, 915,000, and actually nine, oh yeah, 915, is that when they went into their new facility, or did our force grow?
No, that was actually something slightly different. So 2020, the pandemic year, DUCOM actually chose to forego a quarterly fee based off its cash reserves, so therefore all the police departments had their, their shares for the year reduced by quarter.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you.
Good question, Alderman Brennan. Alderman Dunn.
Yeah, for 8023 on page 240, you indicated that study is for a rehab of the current building?
So there, there are options. Basically, the consultants that did the original space needs analysis said that basically there were three tracks to move along. One would be to simply fix the issues that the building currently had. One would be to simply fix the issues that the building currently had. Some of those major issues currently are the fact that there is no chiller. Therefore, we rent an air conditioning chiller for the Police Department every spring. It's actually due to go away on Monday on Halloween, and it's connected to the side of the police station via some pipes. It's, that's basically the structure that's got the chain link fence around it if you drive by the Police Department. There are some brick issues on the front of the building related to the pillars, and there's also a boiler that needs replacement. It's past life expectancy. So that was the, the most inexpensive option was to fix the issues that have currently been identified for the Police Department and not address space-related issues. The second option was to look at the current building and address the space issues as well by adding square footage to it at its current location. And the final third option was to build a new police station either on-site or at a different location.
I'd like to create a circle back on this. I want to call it municipal center parking lot. So there'll be a couple of police station items on it, and then there's some City Hall items on there, on there as well. I probably, I want to add those, when we get to those. So it's sort of a catch-all category for City Hall and police station capital investment.
I think that's probably going to be more under the city manager's part, I'm guessing. Looks like it's a little broader than the police station.
Yeah, I think it gets to a topic that Alderman Hanquist has brought up with all of our municipal facilities and what we're looking at and the referral that's out there. I would add to what Chief McLean said regarding specifically the space study at the police station. This still needs to go back to Public Affairs and Safety. It was a process that began in 2017 or 18, and we had some discussion, and then pandemic hit and obviously got pushed to the back. So it's something that needs to come back. We put this in as a placeholder, so to speak. We've been discussing different city properties that are owned and what the status of that might be, but certainly we can bring it back as a circle back item.
Yeah, we're having ongoing discussions. I'm trying to talk to all the aldermen, and today I met with a couple, and if you haven't had the opportunity, if you're a newer alderman, to take a tour of the police station and see what the status of it is and what issues are there. Because one of the things that Public Affairs and Safety looked at a few years back is not just the fact that we have to rent a chiller to provide air conditioning, and we have some building defects and the boilers going out, but there are operational issues attendant to the design, and it appears that when the station was built in this, was it the 60s or the 80s?
Eighties.
Eighties. Only, I knew you'd know. It was, you know, there was, it wasn't designed by a police architect, and it's a different kind of design than just building another building. The story I'm hearing is it was, there was a budget, and it may not have been enough to do the right thing, but that's as much money there's going to be. And so we look at what we have now. There are safety issues in there, such as difficulties in removing prisoners in the Sally Port, problems with juveniles being processed adjacent to adult offenders, and I could go on, but I think it'll be helpful, and you don't have to go by yourself. Don't be afraid. We have groups of aldermen. You might want to let me or the city manager know, and we'll coordinate to get a tour. It takes about an hour to sort of go through and see some of the issues. You'll be better educated in terms of our future decisions if you do that. Okay. Alderman Mulliner.
I think this is a simple question. Page 2039, 4001, ammunition in the past was about 11,000 to 12,000. It suddenly jumped to 44,000 and then back down to 20,000. Was that an increase in the amount, or was that because of the cost of ammunition had gone up that significantly high?
So the increase from 2021 to 2022 basically had two root causes. The first was an increase in cost, and the second was a dramatic increase in the lead time for deliveries. So our order from 2021 was actually pushed forward into 2022 due to the lead times pandemic-related issues, supply chain issues. So we're looking to return back to a more normal number in 2023, and that's where the reduction from the 44,000 to the 20,000 comes from.
Okay, so you'll have the appropriate amount for training and everything based on the lower number?
Yes, we'll have the right numbers, and that, the biggest issue with that was really just lead time. You know, we order things and they wouldn't show up for a year even more.
All right, thank you.
Alderman Deuter, and then Alderman Hill.
Mayor, thank you, Chief, for walking us through all of this information. A couple of questions related to wages. You talked about the traffic safety unit, and I appreciate all the attention that the department has given to speeding, speeding enforcement, traffic safety. You talked about the interns, who I think helped to support, your narrative says 31 traffic data recording studies. Are we, does the budget include interns coming back again next summer?
Yes, it does. Those are in the part-time line item.
Great, that's great news. Other question related to wages is, on the overtime line, 10-03, looks like that jumped up quite a bit in 2022, which I assume had to do with some vacancies in, within the department. But then in 2023, it seems to continue. So can you just talk about, you know, the reasoning behind that number staying pretty high, even though we hope to be, we know we're more staffed and we hope to be fully staffed in 2023? Help me with the overtime line.
I'm an optimistic person at heart, so it's my hope, not just from an overtime standpoint in dollars and cents, but also from a police operation standpoint, that we do meet our budgeted staff number next year. The increase in overtime this current year was related to vacancies in the Police Department. We had at one point eight vacancies. In addition to that, we had six officers in training. So officers in training don't patrol by themselves and handle calls by themselves that aren't assigned to BEATs. They're with their field training officers. So what that basically meant was for a portion of time that actually led into the summer, which is our busiest call volume time, operationally, we were 14 below what a fully staffed, nobody in training, Police Department looks like. So that was a challenge for us, but I'm happy to say that everybody stepped up to the challenge and signed up to work extra shifts and maintained patrol staffing for the Police Department as we worked through the spring and summer. We have indicated that we've hired new officers. We have two police officers we hired recently that are currently in the Illinois State Police Academy in Springfield, and we have the lateral hiring process that we implemented in May, and we currently have several officers from other agencies that are in the background investigation step, and they should have their BOFPC interviews next month. So it's our hope that the staffing situation continues to improve. With an agency our size, there is generally a handful of people that retire and reach that point in their career, so we have to plan to meet those retirements and fill them with newly trained officers. As the officers we hire over the next few months go into their field training programs at the beginning of next year, you know, it's our hope that our staffing situation is dramatically improved over what it currently is by next spring.
I just ask a follow-up question. So, you know, optimistically, if we were to be fully staffed and hit the number that is shown for the wages full-time, is it possible that the overtime would go down? Or is this the overtime that's realistic as the new officers go through their training?
So I think, I think if we were able to hit our hiring goals and people successfully complete training as Elmhurst Police Officers, you know, that we will become in, come in below the currently listed number there for 2023. That's our hope. But, you know, based off of the things that we currently see in the market, as far as police officers go, it's a highly competitive market for new police officers. There are fewer applicants than there were in past years. So it will continue to take a lot of work on our end to get good people in the door as Elmhurst Police Officers. That's the focus of the recruitment team that I indicated is one of my goals to implement. I think we really need to make it a forefront issue for the Police Department and in working in coordination with the Communications Department and HR Department. That will take a lot of, a lot of work and a lot of effort, and it's our goal to do that.
Thank you so much. That makes sense.
Chief, would you say, if we said 10% of the usual number of applicants we had three years ago, would that be ballpark?
Yes, I will tell you, the last regular eligibility test that we held at York High School, 39 applicants showed up to take the test.
And how many was it years before?
I remember being in an auditorium at York High School that was filled with hundreds when I took my test, so.
All right, additional conversation. Alderman Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. This is in reference to line item 8023 again, and to some of Alderman Dunn's comments. I was looking back, trying to sort of trace back where the Police Department architectural survey or study had been presented, and I did find it back in 2018. You'll be happy to know, Mayor, that even back then, and I quote, "You were encouraging council members to take a tour of the current station to see some of its problems."
Consistency is a virtue.
So I think just a couple of things I'd like to add to the circle back is a couple of things that I saw that were requested here that I couldn't follow the paper trail through on Board Drax, but one of them is that a report from former Alderman Kennedy on what functions needed to remain within the Police Department building and what functions could be remoted offsite. I think one of them had been discussed possibly like the range could be put offsite or something like that, and that's just in the little blurb here. And then Alderman Dunn at the time asked for a report on the average age of Police Department buildings in DuPage County. By the way, it's 1990. I found out it was an inaugural date of that. So maybe we can find out a little bit more on how that compares to other Police Department buildings, but I'd just like that to be included as part of the circle back.
Certainly.
Thank you. Alderman Brennan.
Thank you, Mayor. So Chief, I think you may have answered this somewhat. When we hire a new officer, is there a line item that captures the cost of that onboarding of that new officer? Or is that, is that in the overtime and sort of the shadowing of a fellow officer?
So that's not going to be found in just one line item. When we hire a brand-new police officer, somebody who's never been a police officer anywhere else, that, after they're sworn in, they begin a police academy program. That program is currently approximately three and a half months at one of the several certified academies throughout the state, and we pay that out of our training budget. And then when the recruit officer graduates and is a fully sworn police officer, they come back to Elmhurst and then enter a 20-week field training program. That 20-week field training program is, they're just receiving their normal salary. However, the field training officer contractually gets a stipend per each day that they're training the new officer. Field training officers are officers that attend special training and follow a very structured training and rating program to not only train their new officers, but also rate their performance to ensure they can perform the duties of an Elmhurst Police Officer. At the conclusion of that 20-week program, the new officers, then, if they're, if they meet the requirements, they're certified for solo patrol, and they then begin patrolling the streets of Elmhurst by themselves in a squad car. They're still probationary officers, because the probationary period for a new officer is 15 months. However, they no longer have an FTO with them. So to answer your question, some of the costs related to training a new officer come out of the training budget, and some are overtime costs for the field training officer doing the training.
Excellent, thank you. Additionally, additionally, so the lateral transfer, you know, trend or, you know, process that's in place, and you alluded to that we have a few officers that have, you know, come to Elmhurst through that lateral transfer. So I got to believe, based on their prior experience, that that onboarding process would be different than a new officer out of academy?
Yes, I'm actually happy you brought that up. So a lateral officer is an officer who has at least two years of police experience and is no longer probationary at their current employer. So the program is structured in such a way that we should be getting a fully-trained police officer who's not probationary anymore, and that ideally would shorten the training process here in Elmhurst. They do not have to attend a police academy again. They, after hire, begin the field training program with our officers here to learn the Elmhurst way of policing. And field training for a lateral officer is tailored to the performance of the officer. So you could potentially hire a lateral officer that works in another suburb, very similar to Elmhurst, to the Chicago Land area. Perhaps he or she even is familiar with our records management system because they're a DuPage County officer, and they use the same thing at their prior department, and it could be a very easy train. That field training program could take 10 to 12 weeks for somebody that is a hire from an agency that has a lot in common with Elmhurst. On the flip side of that, our program is open to any police officer in the state of Illinois. We could hire somebody from Southern Illinois, and they are not familiar with our systems, are not familiar with our county procedures, and it may take more time. So that person could potentially take more weeks and start approaching that 20-week field training week number. So it really, it really depends on the performance of the trainee officer, and as they go through tasks and accomplish tasks, the pace of that determines what the total length of the program would be.
Thank you. Makes sense. City Treasurer.
Thank you, Mayor. Looking at line item 6027, our favorite forfeiture expenses, I'm trying to also line it up with page 2-9, 0200. Trying to recall on this program, how that amount is calculated, and how far advanced like you'd know how much we're going to get from the asset forfeiture program? Looking back to 2020, income aligns pretty well with expenses. Last couple of years, maybe not so much, and I know we're budgeting for income to equal expenses. I can't recall exactly how that's calculated, and I believe we do probably have reserves on that as well. Just curious on how that's calculated.
Yes, so the vast majority of our forfeiture proceeds come from the Federal Equitable Sharing Program through our partnership with DEA. And that program, like many things in the pandemic, basically, a lot of offices were closed, a lot of people start, the DEA worked remotely, and we saw the processing of our reimbursements dramatically slow. For a period of time, almost approaching a year, we did not get receipts. We have seen a change, and we have seen the receipts begin, and over the last several months, we've gotten approximately $100,000 in back payments that were slowed down due to the pandemic. And, you know, basically, the pace of those payments are done through a court process. So basically, the way a forfeiture works is it's a civil action taken against assets that are subject to a case in federal court, and the Elmhurst Police Department agents that participated in the investigation, along with the other agents on the task force, are eligible for a share of the assets. And it goes through a court process. That court process could take years. So some of the receipts receiving are from cases that happened years prior. They're not happening, happening in the same year that somebody was arrested and the assets were seized.
Thank you.
Remember the first time I saw a case in court, United States versus 2020 Camaro? I'm like, what did he do? You know, but Alderman Jensen.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just wondering, this is on 8023, this is this report that... Um, this is, this report that Alderman Hill mentioned was put together in 2018, 2019. Um, you know, repairs or reconstruction, whatever, it's been delayed since then and now it's on the Capitol or the CEB for 2023. Is that on the CEB, you know, given the, uh, report hasn't been passed out of PAS or Public Works where it would come from, is that on the CEB as sort of an expectation of a report being passed to do it or in hopes of a report being passed to do it? How, where is that coming from?
I'll take that and, and that's more in hopes that we can get through a process. Um, again with, as I mentioned, with the referral that's out there, looking at all city assets, it may complicate a little bit more, uh, but it's in hopes that we can get through something.
All right, and then follow-up, um, it's listed as GO bond funded for an entire project. Now, do we wait until we pass a report, our committee to find funding for it or is that part of the committee process? Or, you know, do we use passing reports to try to find grant funding, et cetera?
Uh, a combination. Uh, certainly we're going to look for grant funds, uh, initially and, uh, and then part of the discussion on city assets has a lot to do with that. And then any balance, uh, may have to be a GO bond.
All right, great, thank you.
Additional conversation? Alderman Tulludo.
Just snuck it in there. Just wanted to check if Alderman Bastido was still with us? No, I'm joking. I do have an.
I'm here, I'm here.
Uh, hi, hi Alderman Bastido.
Sorry, Alderman Bastido. I'll see if you have questions next.
Um, I just wanted to ask a question again, um, back regarding the body cams and the funding source of the forfeiture and the DUI tech fund. You know, I recall in years past that those items are there, you know, those are recurring revenue, so to speak, sources. I just would appreciate some commentary since we're using that to fund the purchase of the body cams, which are a requirement and unfunded, essentially an unfunded mandate by the state. Um, they're good ideas, but what, what are you not getting for the department in lieu of, because you're using those funds for the body cams?
Well, uh, asset forfeiture funds can be used for, um, law enforcement officer expenses. So we currently utilize those funds, uh, to purchase vehicles, uh, for police officers, uh, currently. Um, several of our vehicles used by our investigations unit have been purchased with asset forfeiture funds and potentially future vehicles, uh, could be purchased with those funds, uh, in the coming years, assuming the manufacturers could get them to us. Um, we also utilize that, those funds for programs. Uh, our canine unit is paid for with asset forfeiture, um, funds and, uh, not only the initial, uh, training and purchase of a trained canine, but the, um, the monthly upkeep, uh, the, the dog food, the, uh, the vet bills, all of those things are funded because it's a law enforcement program. We also fund community programs with asset forfeiture. So our summer mobile patrol vehicle or, uh, summer mobile patrol program that we do each summer, um, the vehicle and the bike patrols that go through the downtown area and go through the Prairie Path and, uh, the Salt Creek Greenway Trail, uh, that's a community outreach program funded by asset forfeiture funds, uh, as well as our DARE program. So, um, a lot of our community outreach comes out from that line item as well.
Just a follow-up then. So if you're using more of that budget for the body cams in the next year and two until they're all purchased, are, are any of those programs suffering or is there enough in that budget to do all of those things and get the, I mean, and get the body cams?
When making my decision about using, um, asset forfeiture funds for these purchase, purchases, uh, I did not see any programs that would be eliminated because of, of this funding. Um, we've been fortunate that we've been up, we've been part of, uh, the DEA task force for many years and we have the funds in the line account, um, that we can pay for, uh, the body cam program and we can pay for the squad car, um, dash cam program out of these funds. Um, just to reiterate, we're basically proposing a split where the body cams would come out of asset forfeiture, but the, the new dash cams for the vehicles would come out of the DUI tech fund. Um, so it's, it's shared amongst the two line items, uh, moving forward. In my opinion, utilizing the asset forfeiture fund is a, for body cams is a program that the federal government, um, would appreciate because it's what the program is set up for. It's equipment that's for law enforcement officers, uh, to do their official duties, uh, plus it's in line with, um, the goals of, um, the 21st century policing reporting that provides transparency, uh, in officers and how they do their jobs. So it's a, uh, it's an equipment expense, um, that I think the asset forfeiture fund, um, meets very well.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Hanquist.
Did I hear they need a new police station?
Pardon me?
Did I hear we need a new police station?
Um, I don't know what you heard.
Thanks, good job. I have no questions, thanks.
I was corrected when I said we need a new police department and city manager goes, "No, police station." I'm like, "Oh, yeah." All right, uh, I think no, no other, uh, discussion on this. All right, thank you, chief. Very helpful. Um, we will pick up city manager.
If I can just say one more thing, we talked a lot tonight about the hiring process for both fire and police and I really want to give credit and thanks to the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners because they have put in a lot of time over these last couple of years and they're a volunteer group and they work, uh, very hard with our HR department and both chiefs to bring in those who are still willing to, uh, work for public safety. So thanks to them. I know that their budget's up in the next meeting, but I just thought it was appropriate to say that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, city manager. All right, could I have a motion to adjourn? Alderman Brennan, second. Alderman Hanquist. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We're adjourned.
Uh, she's on the phone.
She's on the phone. Yeah. Dunn?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Palmsky?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Tulludo?
Aye.
Cahill absent.
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Remus?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
13 ayes, 0 nays, 1 absent.
13 ayes, 0 nays, 1 absent. We are adjourned.